Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, October the 11th. Will the clerk please call her own?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Eilert.
Here. All are present. We do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who are here in attendance, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent motor off, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We do have one presentation to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Mr. Tim Dewis, who's director of our mental health agency, to join me at the podium for a proclamation declaring October 7 through 18, excuse me, 7 through 13, 2018, as Mental Health Awareness Week. The stats show that one in every four individuals will be impacted by mental illness somehow. You apply that ratio to Johnson County, and that means something like 12,500 of us will be impacted by a mental health issue. Our mental health department does a great job. We serve, I think the last count, and Tim can verify, over 10,000 individuals each year. And we have some very active programs involving our schools, involving our criminal justice system, and all of these things are supported by local taxpayer dollars, as well as state dollars. But, Tim, I want to say thank you for your leadership and your professionals who work in our mental health department for the outstanding service that's provided. And that service is provided with no consideration of your ability to pay. We do have private pay. We do have insurance pay, and then we have those who are unable to pay or pay on a sliding scale. So our department serves a wide variety of individuals in our community. Tim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm Tim Dewis with the Mental Health Center. I just want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for this proclamation, and I know that I've said before that I've worked for Johnson County Mental Health Center for 22 years now, and I would not have stayed that long if I didn't know that the community and our elected officials were supportive of a strong mental health safety net. Each year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental health issue. However, mental illness directly affects everyone, or indirectly through families, friends, and colleagues. Despite mental illness's reach and prevalence, and nearly, that would be about 116,000 if you just look at mental health conditions and not serious mental illness, about 116,000 Johnson County residents each year. But there's also stigma associated with that, misunderstanding, and that is also unfortunately widespread. That's why this year, the theme of Mental Illness Awareness Week is to cure stigma. Stigma is toxic, and it creates an environment of shame, fear, and silences many individuals from seeking treatment. However, this virus of stigma is 100% curable. Compassion, empathy, and understanding are the antidote, and we all can move that antidote forward through the voice that we use. Throughout this week, NAMI, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, will be having events throughout the day and week. Today specifically, Pathways to Hope is having their annual Hope Night of Hope Gala. We are, the Mental Health Center, is having its annual chili feed and art show at the Shawnee office, and I'll be on the radio for an hour on KKFI, doing an hour segment on mental illness, stigma, and the impact it has on our community. So we have a lot of events going on, and I appreciate all of the support that we get from this community. Thank you.
I just made, I just want to make one additional comment when I talked about the support that our community offers our mental health agency. As I recall, within the last year or two, on an annual basis, we provide about $6 million a year of uncompensated services for those who come to our mental health agency. And that demonstrates the support that our community has for providing these services. And so I would be remiss without saying a big thank you to taxpayers of Johnson County for their willingness to support this very, very important program in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Mr. Raby?
Good morning. Tom Raby, 17513 West 113th Street in Olathe. I've spoken before about the decline of American newspapers, and I can read Canadian and UK newspapers online that are much more informative when it comes to national and world news, and also more objective. Back in August and September, my wife and I took a two-week trip further east, and we got newspapers for nothing at a couple of hotels, and you got to remember what we paid for them and what we got from them. It was not nothing, because I still, I still find information in a newspaper even if I disagree with the excrement on some of the pages. But the main thing was that we went to a place in West Virginia where I could buy the daily newspaper for 75 cents. How long's it been since you could buy a real newspaper around here, or one for 75 cents, either case? My first awareness of the decline in the agenda of newspapers came several years ago when the Kansas City newspaper got into a feud, and it was literally a feud with a state senator from Johnson County. And this feud continued for some time. Both parties are, both principal parties are now deceased. But I've came to realize with this encounter, or a series of encounters, that the newspaper was not there to print the news. They were there to force their opinion. And that still goes on today. And the feud generated so much animosity toward this state senator that people showed up at her house, banging on her door, and harassing her family. Now, a lot of you don't remember that. Some of you weren't even here at the time. But just as a moment, a moment of remembrance, Kay O'Connor died this week. And I didn't always agree with Kay O'Connor, and I'm sure a lot of you didn't always agree with her. But she deserved a lot better treatment than she got from that newspaper, a lot more objective treatment, and truthful reporting rather than opinion reporting. And that's my speech for today. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Tom, for making that noted for passing. Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, there being no one else to be heard, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I have a couple of short notes for the record. I will be signing a partial release of easement of the Consolidated Domain Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at Prairie Star Parkway and Canyon Creek Boulevard in the city of Lenexa. I will also be signing a five-fold release of easements for the Consolidated Domain Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at Rainbow Boulevard and Shawnee Mission Parkway in the city of Mission Woods. And finally, an agreement with the city of Overland Park for construction of a stormwater management program known as 89th Street Reads to Outlook Storm Water Improvement. Before we go to the balance of our agenda, I've asked Election Commissioner Mr. Ronnie Metzger to give us an update of activities in his office this morning. Mr. Metzger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Ronnie Metzger, Election Office. Greetings to the rest of the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you all for your tremendous support for our office and all of our endeavors, and without you, we cannot do what we do. We did have difficulty on the night of the primary election. As we all know, we, we were embarking on a new journey with a brand-new election voting system, and so we brought a report on the 11th of August at the Thursday meeting of this board, to kind of a quick report, and we said that we would be bringing you a further report, at which time we had significant things to bring forward. And so today, we have a quick three-point outline, what happened, what have we done to remedy this situation, and what surety do we have that it will never happen again? And to assist me in our presentation today is Adam Carbalito, the Senior Vice President of Product Development. He's been with ESNS, our vendor, for 18 years, and he supervises all product development, whether it's on the hardware side or the software side, and of course, our situation involved the, the software portion of our purchase. And so today, we present to you Adam, who can articulate what happened, what have we done to fix it over these last weeks, and how we can be assured that we are ready to move forward. So, Adam, floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, everybody, for giving me the time to present today. So what I'm just going to do is kind of walk through the timeline of events up until today. So, starting with the primary election in August, we had some issues that were reported where we were having slow uploading of results into our results aggregation software. So on election night, we use a software utility to aggregate results from all the different polling places. That upload process from USB sticks was going extremely slow, I think as everybody is probably aware, and we didn't get results, final unofficial results out until the day after the election. So we were notified of the issue that night at ESNS, and my team and I began digging in immediately to try to figure out what the root cause was. Pretty quickly, we identified that there was a process running in the background of the software that was extremely inefficient, and that process was kind of burdening the computer and slowing everything else down that was happening on that computer. It was a process that was running in the background to keep statistics up to date, so that if you needed general statistics, you could get them very quickly. So the process was well-intentioned, but unfortunately, it was not optimized and not efficient. So the team began, my team began working to optimize that process. They were able to modify the code, optimize the process fairly rapidly, and then we went into a series of rigorous and extensive testing exercises to ensure that we had resolved the issues that were experienced in the primary. So in Omaha, in our corporate office, we went through numerous stress and load tests, both recreating the primary election, as well as simulating what we expect to happen in the general election. All of that testing in Omaha went extremely well. From there, we took that same testing and performed that testing here onsite in Johnson County with the Johnson County election staff present and participating in that testing. We ran through the primary election again with the new modified software, and then we did the general election simulation. Both of those tests went extremely well. I think everybody involved was very pleased with the results. Results were uploading very quickly. All the processes that you need to run in the software were efficient and optimized and running very well. In parallel to that, we also started the federal certification campaign. So in order to update the software in Johnson County and run it in a live election, it needs to be both federally approved and then state-approved. So we started that federal approval process with the Election Assistance Commission just a little over a month ago. The EAC, the Election Assistance Commission, along with an independent testing lab, basically went through a series of additional stress and load tests, similar to what we performed in Omaha, as well as onsite in Johnson County. The independent test lab had the same positive results in their testing. Everything went extremely smooth. There was no issues, which ultimately led to the Election Assistance Commission just last week granting federal certification approval of our new modified software, which is called EVS 6020. This week, we then went to the state of Kansas, demonstrated the software to them, went through their testing, and subsequently, we received state approval to install the software and run it in the general election. So yesterday, actually, we installed the software in Johnson County. We were able to run some preliminary tests against the software. All, everything went well as expected. We have one final test that's occurring right now, which is just the typical pre-election logic and accuracy test. We expect that to go very well and smoothly, and with that, from the system perspective, we'll be ready to go, and I have total confidence that we're going to have a great election in November.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Metzger, did you have a follow-up comment?
I do. I just would wish to thank our vendor, ESNS, for their timely response to this situation. Every product does have a first time to be used, and both our hardware and our software was being deployed in this format in its, for its maiden voyage ever to be used in a live election. And so we have worked out all the bugs, and this, this effort was collaborative, I might mention, that it involved not only ESNS, the election office team, but also DTI from right here within the county as a third party to assist us and to assure us, all kinds of support also from the county manager's office and, and others within the county. So we feel like we have all collectively put our best brains forward to work together to find this solution. I'd like to make some additional comments about Election Day itself. You might recall that we took some initial hard hits in social media with comments such as "the machines don't work," or "the lines are very long." These kinds of comments were extremely exaggerated, and we did do some research on that that I think warrants a remark or two, so that you understand the facts and not what someone can write in a tweet or a Facebook post. And that's simply that we discovered less than 10 of our, 10% of our polling locations, 192 to be exact, less than 10% of them had long lines. And most of the ones that had long lines were not enormously long, but we have taken measures to correct that and to be able to expedite getting the voters through. Our two steps that we have taken is to double the number of machines that we are putting out in the field, and that will accommodate the increased number of voters, plus what I call the learning curve factor. We will have 1,250 election workers who have already had one experience with the voting machines. That's critically important. We'll have an additional 1,000 more election workers who will be doing so for the first time. So we're increasing the number of election workers, the number of voting machines, and we're increasing the amount of training. The last piece of what we're doing to fix these very small, what I would call minor but important operational issues on Election Day is we're simply starting the election workers in their preparation time 30 minutes sooner. Most of the reports that we had where the machines don't work were simply not that the machines weren't working, the election workers simply were not quite ready. And so there's a big difference between not quite ready to open and the machines don't work. And so we remedy that with a very simple move, calling them out at 5:30 in the morning rather than at 6 o'clock. We had many locations that did extremely well. We run into problems like this sometimes. The central resource library, the card would not swipe to open the door. The workers could not get in until 6:35, but they managed to get the polls open at 6:35, set up the machines, get them ready to go, and the first voter voted at 7:00 a.m. And so it's all possible. Machines are fast, but we need to recognize that with any new technology, for the first time, that a person uses it, there will be a learning curve. So I wanted to cite that. And then the last piece is how are we doing? There is high-level engagement in voter registration. As you know, we follow the law at the state and the federal level, the regulations, the rules, and the standards. There is a precise way that we have list management of the voter registration list, so in spite of what people might say in Facebook tweets and so on, we don't purge lists. We do have reclassification according to the statutes and so forth. So at the presidential election, we had an all-time high registration number of 407,000. After we reallocated the numbers into the proper categories, January 1st, it dropped down to 385,000 in Johnson County. It's gradually built back up. On August 1st, it was another new all-time record of 408,000, and we continue to see high activity. As of yesterday, the number was 415,000. Every day is now a new all-time record for Johnson County in voter registration. So I'd like to conclude my remarks with just one story, because I love stories. That's, that's why we're here, is because of stories of it, things like this I'm going to share with you right now. Voter registration story involving Johnson County developmental supports. A number of weeks ago, we sent two of our people with two of the voting machines with the election. It's a demonstration election, and set up the machines, and we taught the self-advocacy group how to vote on the brand-new machine. You should have seen the looks on their faces. They were so proud and so thrilled, and they did so well. We went back a week later to do a voter registration drive and registered many of them, and then yesterday, they came on a field trip tour to turn in their registration blank at our front desk. I wish you could have been there. We did take some pictures, but the joy on their face of registering to vote was simply something I will never forget, and I might say, "I made it through it without crying," which is a miracle for me. And then after we got through with their registration process, and they also brought a file folder full of their colleagues that were not able to make the trip, who had also registered. Then we took them on a tour and gave them another opportunity to practice voting in the demonstration election on a machine out in the warehouse. You should have seen their exclamations as they came through the warehouse, seeing 2,100 voting machines being prepared for this election. And so voter registration is high. That's one story that really touched my heart, and I wanted to share that with you today. And with that, I'm prepared to stand for questions.
Mr. Metzger, would you remind us all of the mail ballots and advanced voting dates and times?
That is, that is true. One of our big strategies is to, is to promote the advanced voting. We have profound mail right now. We, we have 30 extra people that we've brought in right now to handle all of the requests for advanced vote by mail. And so there's, there's profound involvement by several organizations promoting and marketing that. We also make it available to the public to make a request. It's called an advanced vote application, advanced vote by mail application. And then the other way that folks can vote in advance is one of our six regular advanced vote in-person sites. And those sites open on the 22nd of October and go Monday through Saturday of that week. And then the next week, we open back up again, Monday through Saturday at these six locations. The sites can be found on our website. And in the presidential election, 60% of the people who voted voted early, most of them at one of these advanced vote sites. This is one of our strategies to alleviate difficulties and long lines and, and make it fun, fast, and flexible to vote in advance.
I think we need to emphasize that those who are voting by the mail ballot, please take time to read the instructions on the ballot. That's very, very important. The instructions are fairly simple, but don't drop that ballot in the mail until you've double-checked that you have followed the instructions on the ballot. Second question I have, there was a report in, in the press, at least electronic, last night or the night before last, about concerns about online voting being vulnerable to attack. My recollection is, we do not have that, but could you explain our, where we're at in that regard?
Security in the voting process is of key, key concern right now, of course, since June of 2016, when all of this exploded. And so we have taken all measures, and one of the great advantages of the new system that we purchased affords us the greatest security available and known to man at this time in the voting system industry. And so we are, from that standpoint, we are in good hands. The other big factor is related to voter registration records, and that is in an encrypted and very well-guarded, secure system that is a central service provided by a third-party vendor to the Secretary of State's office, and then as Johnson County election office, we're the custodians of the records for Johnson County. And so in the case of the machinery and equipment, it is all air-gapped and, let's see, I'm looking for the word I'm looking for. It's sealed off so that it's concealed to itself and air-gapped. Hardened and air-gapped, that's the word I was looking for. Hardened and air-gapped.
Not connected to the internet.
It's not connected to the internet. It's air-gapped, meaning there's no Wi-Fi, no modem, no, no connect, there's not even a port on it that would make it connectable to the internet. So everything is sealed. The tabulation system and everything about the management and the tabulation, the reporting system, is a sealed system unto itself. It's connected to other component parts within its own system, but not, not to the outside internet. So when we report, for example, our So when we report, for example, our totals to, to the outside world, it comes off in a, in a, we, we print the disc and go out to the other room, to our regular office, to the, to the systems that would be connected to the internet and upload the totals, that's how it's transferred. It's, it's physically transferred. It's not connected in any way electronically by modem, Wi-Fi, or any other means. So that's, that's how we secure it.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft, did you have a?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Metzger and?
Carbolito.
Mr. Carbolito. First of all, I, I want to recognize that there were some challenges in the last process. I very much appreciate and respect the fact that you both stepped up, taking ownership of the issue and addressing the issue as expeditiously as possible. I, I know it's complicated and it took some time, so I respect that and I appreciate that very much. But Mr. Carbolito, I was going to ask you to elaborate a little bit on the stress testing, if you could. You had mentioned last ti, or this time that it had been sent to an independent lab to, to test the stress of the system. Did that not occur last time, and is that part of the reason why we may have missed that compiling issue and that we, we are absolutely certain that we will not have the same or any compiling issues in terms of the timeliness of processing?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. We, we do stress test the system. We do put load on the system, but stress testing the system and the particular configuration that was used here in Johnson County unfortunately was not done, and that was missed. We have now done that multiple times, repeatedly, over and over again, both with the primary election and the general, well, in, in our general election testing, we kind of created a worst-case scenario-type load test where we had, I think, almost 600,000 votes in, so that would be well beyond our, our registered voters here in Johnson County. So, you know, even if we grow dramatically over the next couple of years, we, we think the system's prepared to handle that load.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much. I would, I would just close with these comments. I'm not telling the vendor something that they don't already know. But the early reports was that the county had paid $11 million or thereabouts for this system. The county has not paid anything for this system. The authorization of the contract back in May required that the county accept the performance of the contract, and that has not yet occurred. And in my judgment, and I've shared this with the vendor, that the real test will be the general election night. And so following a successful test, we will talk about payment, so. But I wanted to make sure that, that folks understood that, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have a comment. KCPT5, or KCPT, not five, Channel 19, there we go. Ruckus, you're all familiar with the Ruckus Show. I want to commend Ronnie for his interview with Mike Shannon Thursday afternoon, or Thursday evening, and also as we run on Sunday. So, nice job, Ronnie. You represented your position well and the county well, and you answered the questions correctly. Okay, so there we go. Nice job.
Well, again, thank you very much. Thank you for your, your decision to correct what needed to be corrected, and Metzger, Mr. Metzger, thank you for, for working through that process, and I also want to note our own DTI department who worked with and monitored activities of the vendors. So we will look forward to a successful, early-completed count on Election Evening. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our consent agenda. If the clerk would please read the proposed consent agenda items.
Item number one, resolution number 087-18, consider approving the district coroner's appointment of Diane C. Peterson, M.D., as a deputy district coroner pursuant to KSA 22A-226. Item number two, consider contract renewal and addendum for Federico Consulting Incorporated for lobbying services. And item number three, resolution number 085-18, consider granting an exemption from the alcoholic liquor prohibitions of KSA 41-719 for the libraries listed in the resolution subject to the terms of the resolution and repealing resolution number 045-14.
Thank you. Is there an item any commissioner would like to have considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? No one to be heard. It's back for the commission, Mr. Osterhaus.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number four.
Consider approving the September 20th, 2018 business session minutes.
Mr. Allen was absent. Do I hear a motion to approve, Mr. Osterhaus?
I move that we approve the September 20, 2018 business session minutes.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions to be noted? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number five, resolution number WD-18-031, conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funds for roofing services at Johnson County wastewater treatment and pumping facilities in an amount not to exceed $800,000.
Public hearing is open. Ms. Pekerek.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pekerek with the wastewater department. This is a funding request for roof repair and replacement at several of the Johnson County wastewater facilities. JCW has over 100 roofs within our treatment plants and our pumping stations throughout our system. There are several roofs that are in need of repair and others that require replacement. JCW staff have prioritized roof replacements in a plan for the coming year, and we estimate that cost to be $650,000. The repair estimates are $110,000. We would also like to provide for ongoing roof maintenance and preventive maintenance in order to maximize the lives of our roofs. JCW plans to utilize a cooperative contract with a company called Roof Connect for roofing products and services through the National IPA. Authorization for the contract with Roof Connect is the next agenda item. This funding request was included in the most recent financial model that we presented to the board, and that was in May of this year, and we recommend approval of the funding in the amount of $800,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Is anyone present wish to address the commission on this item? No one to be heard. Public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Osterhaus.
I move that the board adopt resolution number WD-18-031, authorizing funds for roofing services at Johnson County wastewater treatment and pumping facilities in an amount not to exceed $800,000.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution in amount not to exceed $800,000. Further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number six, consider authorizing a term and supply contract with Roof Connect under the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Cooperative Contract Number R-132-203 for roofing services in an amount not to, to not exceed $800,000 annually. The contract period for this award is for one year with an option to renew annually for four additional one-year periods.
Public hearing is open. Ms. Pekerek.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pekerek with wastewater department. So this agenda item is related to the previous agenda item. There's no funding request as part of this act, or part of this briefing sheet, I should say. This request is for authorizing a term and supply contract with a company called Roof Connect under the National IPA, and IPA stands for the Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, of which Johnson County is a member. Purchasing policies allow for the use of competitively solicited cooperative contracts, which this is. Johnson County Wastewater interviewed two National IPA contractors. Roof Connect was selected because they utilize bid pricing from multiple roofing manufacturers. Johnson County, or excuse me, Roof Connect is a professional trade organization. They're comprised of over 70 roofing manufacturers, and they'll use bid pricing from manufacturers for materials as well. The second company that we had interviewed as part of this process utilizes their own roofing materials, and so we felt as though that may not be as competitive. Roof Connect utilizes a group of local contractors to bid the roofing projects. The contractors will utilize leveraged material pricing from Roof Connect in their bids. Roof Connect will get three bids on all of our roof replacements. They'll also obtain two bids on all repairs that are over $10,000. All the bids and cost proposals are reviewed by the National IPA in order to comply with a not-to-exceed pricing as part of the cooperative contract. The request for the term and supply contract is for one year in the amount of, a not-to-exceed amount, I should say, of $800,000 with an option to renew for four additional one-year periods.
Ms. Pekerek, in addition to the $800,000 maximum, you indicated that in some cases there might only be two bids. What, what happens if, if both of those bids are extraordinarily high? Do we, or does a contractor have the ability to reject?
Yes, we would. So we would, what we would do then is consider how, a different way to procure that, for example. So we don't have to use this contract. We could still go out and design and bid something ourselves and obtain bids that way.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Follow on to your question, Mr. Chairman. It sounds like that Roof Connect is being used as almost a supplement for the bidding process, that they have good local connections that we want to rely upon. My question is, are there performance expectations in this contract to make sure that the process they use is at an arm's-length relationship with the vendors to make sure, going to the chairman's points, that if prices are unreasonable or extreme, that we have some way of, of identifying that and controlling that?
So, and I, Robin from purchasing is also here, so she may want to supplement my comments, but from my understanding, we'll be able to review all those bids, and again, if we're not comfortable with what's being presented to us, and it has to, it has to comply with a National IPA cooperative contract, but also if, based on, you know, our experience or based on the bids we're receiving, we're not comfortable with what we're seeing, in other words, we think the prices are too high, even the lowest bid is too high for the work that they're doing, then we'll reject all of those. We have, and we'll follow the purchasing procedures to go back out and, ourselves, and manage a, a project ourselves.
Follow on, Mr. Chairman. So then you feel it's more cost-beneficial to use this process rather than doing the bids internally or through, through our purchasing operation?
Yeah, we've, so, you know, we've utilized several methods to deliver roof replacements and roof repairs over the last decade or so. One of those is a traditional design bid build. We've had challenges, honestly, with the contractors that we get under those contracts, with them being able to finish projects and following through to finish those projects up, and we, we get them to do it, but it's a, there's a pretty significant amount of management associated with that. We've also utilized some job order contracting, and that was more successful in terms of getting good workmanship, getting contractors to complete the jobs. However, we feel like we can get more competitive pricing under this particular contract, simply based on the, the breadth of possible contractors and the fact that Roof Connect is bidding, you know, all of these, not only the, the labor, the work, the projects, but also the materials as well. They've leveraged some good pricing based on bidding materials.
One follow-on, Mr. Chairman. You indicated that you believe you'll get better pricing. How will you monitor that to make sure that you're obtaining the desired results? Is that something you will do or?
My staff, yes, our staff will do that. So, and that's, again, based on the fact that they'll be providing that bid information to the staff to review.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Again, the public hearing is open. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission on this item, would invite you to the podium. If there's no one to be heard, public hearing is closed. A motion would be in order. Mr. Osterhaus.
I move that the board authorize a term and supply contract with Roof Connect under the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Cooperative Contract Number R-132203 for roofing services in the amount not to exceed $800,000 annually. Contract period for this authorization is for one year with an option to renew annually for four additional one-year periods.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution and the contract as presented. Any further comments or questions? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number seven, resolution number WD-18-035, conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funds for Johnson County wastewater facility improvement projects in an amount not to exceed $2,530,000.
Public hearing is open.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pekerek with wastewater again. This request before you is for multiple projects that are part of the wastewater capital improvement program. The projects we have requested are as follows. We have treatment and pumping facility asset renewal. The amount for this request is $590,000, and these are projects that we've identified through our asset management program where we have need of renewal that might be due to condition or reliability or risk of failure or safety concerns. The project, projects will include evaluations, design, and construction of improvements. Engineering services will be provided by consultants that were selected under the treatment and pumping asset renewal request for proposal process, and construction will be provided for utilizing the existing term and supply contracts or procured utilizing county purchasing procedures. The second request is for Middle Basin, at our Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Treatment Facility, for a sodium bicarbonate feed system. This request is for design and bid phase for the bicarbonate system in the amount of $460,000. Back in 2016, one of our digesters experienced an upset as the result of a significant disruption in operations and fat soils and grease receiving at this facility. So this, the map that's up on your screen here, this is our Douglas L. Smith Middle Basin Treatment Facility located at College, which runs along the north side of this map, and US 69, which runs along the west side. Inside this red box here, that is our digester complex, and one of those digesters, in fact, the one with the shiny roof here, is the one that experienced digester upset. And so after that occurred, Johnson County wastewater hired Black &amp; Beach to help us develop solutions to reduce the risk of future problems related to upset. And this is one of the 12 improvement projects that they identified, and it includes a sodium bicarbonate feed system. This will help us prevent upset. Basically, it's, it's like your digestive system, when you're feeding yourself atoms if your stomach's upset, it's a very similar process, just on a much larger scale. The last item, or the last request item, I should say, is for wastewater facility term and supply contracts, contract projects, excuse me. This request is in the amount of $1,480,000, and it's for construction projects that have been identified through our asset renewal process. This contract that we have with the contractors, contractors, I should say, was approved, approved by the board in June. Total funding request for this briefing sheet is $2,530,000, and these projects were included in the most recent capital finance model char, uh, model that we presented to the board in May.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pekerek, I noticed that all three of these projects are going to be paid for out of bond funds, just to make sure... of bond funds, just to make sure that the project improvements will last longer than the term of the bonds. Are you offering those assurances?
Yes, sir, we review that each time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Again, this is a public hearing. We would welcome any comments for anyone who would like to address the commission on this item. There's no one to be heard. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Osterhaus, did you draw the short straw today?
You're welcome. Thank you.
I will move that the board approved Resolution Number WD 18-035, authorizing funds for Johnson County wastewater facility improvement projects in the amount not to exceed $2,530,000.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the resolution as recommended. Again, any comments or questions? Yeah, Mr. Allen.
I just have one comment. I know that's a significant amount, but I think one of the strengths of Johnson County wastewater is keeping the assets up to date. And, like the prior thing, roofs do need to be replaced. Most of our flat roofs have, unfortunately, a short lifespan in these projects. And, when you do these incremental improvements on a regular basis, the whole system benefits. And, that's one of the benefits of Johnson County. We are ahead of the curve, and we do maintain what we have. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
No other comments. Motion is before us. Clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number eight. Resolution Number 084-18. Conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony on the proposed amendments to the FY 2018 budget, and consider adoption of amending the FY 2018 budget for the mental health fund, risk management fund, and wastewater SRCFP fund.
Public hearing is open. Mr. Newfeld.
Scott Newfeld, the Budget Office. Good morning. Before we get into the details, I just want to remind the board that by state statute, we are allowed to republish funds. It cannot be for additional tax dollars. It has to be for additional other revenues. And so, with all three of these amendments, they are for unforeseen revenues other than local tax dollars. So, I wanted to make that clear. That's an important distinction. With regard to the mental health fund, we are amending the budget for just under $2 million. And this is due to a variety of reasons, programs, revenues that have come in. It's laid out in the briefing sheet, and I did check to make sure that both Tanner and Tim were here before I came up, because there's a lot behind that. But, in general, this is a pretty normal occurrence with mental health. Lot of fluidity in their funding sources, a lot of agility required to keep up with demand. And so, they've had a number of outside funding that has become available since we originally published the FY 2018 budget. Wastewater is the largest amount, but the simplest explanation. And as the board knows, you directed staff to look at the feasibility of issuing debt earlier rather than later, and that resulted in significant savings, both with regard to wastewater and the courthouse. And so, while I'd love to take credit for that foresight, it did come from the board. And, that is why we are republishing wastewater's budget, because we moved up the debt sale to take advantage of interest rates. Lastly, with risk management, this is tied to insurance proceeds and risk management proceeds that are allowing us to go ahead and take care of the damage that was sustained, I think it was over a year ago, with the microburst. And so, as laid out here, we are needing to dispense insurance proceeds to the airport fund to take care of those things. So, three very different scenarios, but all tying together for need to republish those budgets.
Okay. Thank you very much. My simple explanation is that, you know, the county and other local units of government are required to report what I call a revenue budget.
Right.
Any new revenue that comes in that's unanticipated at the time the budget is set, you have to go through this process of conducting a public hearing in order to utilize those funds.
That would be a brief way to explain it.
That's why I'm not budget director. No offense, Scott, please.
None taken.
We trade back and forth. We trade back and forth.
I appreciated your summary, Chairman.
Any other questions? All right, again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? No one to be heard. Public hearing is closed. To Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution Number 084-18, approving the amendment to the FY 2018 budget, including increased appropriations for the mental health fund in the amount of $1,924,857, risk management fund in the amount of $3 million, and the wastewater SRCFP fund in the amount of $177,939,000, and $672,000.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to approve the resolution and the budget amendments as presented. Any further questions or discussion? Not, clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number nine. Resolution Number 089-18. RFP 2018-051. Consider adopting to amend the FY 2018 to 2022 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, to include the creation of a project account not to exceed the amount of $1,325,296 for stormwater infrastructure improvements at New Century Air Center Navy Park, and approving and authorizing a contract with George Butler Associates for the design and bidding and construction phase engineering services for the project at a cost not to exceed $271,289.
Mr. Otto.
Good morning, Aaron Otto with the County Manager's Office, and here with the Airport Commission today before you with this request. This is a request for proposals that went out. The project in front of you does a couple important things at New Century. It cleans up some bank erosion that's taking place around a couple original Navy ponds that were put in when it was Leithan Naval Air Station. There's a lot of utilities around there to work and coordinate and factor into that design. Second, it replaces a 1942 spillway that is a regulator of water flowing out of that, and always want to make sure that's in place and in good shape. And, lastly, it increases capacity for storage of stormwater, because it removes what previously was a land bridge used by the railroad for the Leithan Naval Air between the two ponds. That will be removed, which increases the storage capacity. So, this amends the CIP. We were looking at doing this, the airport was next year. This will put it in a position where it can start design work on it now, with the recommendation from the effort from GBA to do that work. This is being funded, it's overall, you can see about a $1.3 million project. It's being funded through a SMAC grant. I'm very grateful to that opportunity with the county, which is a twenty, roughly 25% match by the local entity, in this case, not a city, but the Airport Commission's Enterprise Fund, and then 75% from the SMAC grant. So, that's what's in front of you today, is authorizing the agreement with GBA to start working on design and the construction oversight.
Questions? Anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, back before the commission, a motion would be in order. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to approve Resolution Number 089-18 to amend FY 2018 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, to include the creation of a project account not to exceed the amount of $1,325,296 for stormwater infrastructure improvements at New Century Air Center Navy Park, and to approve, and approving and authorizing a contract with George Butler Associates for the design and bidding of construction phase engineering services for the project at a cost not to exceed $271,289 per RFP 2018-015.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to approve the resolution. One, one question, Mr. Otto. The, the airports are enterprise centers. In other words, they, they, from the activities at the airport, they provide the revenue, and no tax dollars are, no county general fund tax dollars are involved in this transaction. Is that consistent? Is that right?
That's correct. And very grateful that through the land rents and some building rents, both of the airports have been independent since roughly about 2005, 2006. And so, it's from those private proceeds, which is county land, it's helping pay for these kind of expenses of the airport.
Fine, thank you. Any other questions? All right, clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 10. Resolution Number 077-18. Consider a request from Robert S. Murphy Trust, applicant landowner, for final development plan plat, approval for 10 residential lots to be known as Copper Hill Estates II on approximately 80 acres, zoned PRUR.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig, Planning Department. This item is out of the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board. That body met and approved this item on September the 5th. Staff is also recommending approval of this item for a final plat at, basically, at 191st and Lackman. This item was originally, the preliminary was brought to you in, in August of this year, was also approved. And also, on another note, working with Mr. Murphy, this is one of our first applications, our official Development Review Committee applications that we had. I think we met with him in January to begin discussing, the initial discussions of this project, and staff is excited to present it to you.
And this comes to us with a positive recommendation, both from the zoning board and staff, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments you'd like to make?
No.
All right, so noted, there are no comments from the applicant. Anyone else? All right, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 077-18, approving a final development plan as a final plat for 10 residential lots to be known as Copper Hill Estates II, located at 15315 West 191st Street, for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations recommended by the zoning board.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to approve the recommendation and the resolution as recommended. Any further comments? There being none, clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number 11.
Resolution Number 078-18. Consider a request from Bryant Combs, applicant landowner, for a preliminary and final development plan for construction of an office warehouse building on property zone PEC 3, Plan Delight Industrial Park District.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig, again. This item for a preliminary and final development plan, basically, 207th and Metcalf. This item was originally approved in 2015, however, with no activity on the development plan, that, that plan expired, the plat expired. So, it's back before you. It does include a minimum infrastructure waiver to provide a four-foot gravel shoulders at 207th Street. It was presented by the, before the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board on September the 5th, 2018. That board recommended unanimous approval of this item, and staff is also recommending approval of this item.
Questions? The applicant present? Any comments you'd like to make? All right. Note, the applicant chose not to make comments. Is there anyone else? All right, it's back before the commission. Motion is in order. Mr. Klucka.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 078-18, approving a preliminary and final development plan for the office warehouse building, and a minimum infrastructure waiver for property located at 6946 West 207th Street, for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to approve the resolution as recommended. Any further questions or comments? There being none, clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 12. Application Number SE-PP/FP-3419AU. Consider a request from Alan Brand Drews, applicant, and Josh and Margaret Arnold, landowners, for a preliminary and final plat for one, one residential lot to be known as Arnold Acres, located at 21175 Mission Road, on approximately five acres on property zoned RN1, residential neighborhood 1 district.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig, Planning Department. This item is really a cleanup item for a preliminary and final plat off of Mission Road for a one-lot subdivision. It was presented, presented with the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board on September the 5th. That board recommended unanimous approval of this item. Staff is also recommending approval of this item. It does include two waivers, one to provide direct access onto a type 1 arterial, which is Mission Road, and also the, not improving the shoulders along Mission Road. And it really, it was brought before us because the applicant wishes to build a pool on the, on the site. But, I believe the homes existed since 1977, and the lot was originally created in 1987, so it's been there for a long time.
Okay. Questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments?
No.
So noted, no comments from the applicant. Anyone else who would like to speak to this item? If not, back before the commission, a motion would be in order. And Mr. Klucka.
This is District 3 Day for Planning Commission. They've had a busy month. I move to approve a preliminary and final plat for one residential lot to be known as Arnold Acres, plus two waivers from the minimum infrastructure requirements for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations recommended by the zoning board.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application in regards to the preliminary and final development plans. Any further comments? There being none, clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klucka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 13. Resolution Number 083-18. Application Number SE-CU-3424SP. Consider a request from CCATT for Crown Castle USA Incorporated, applicant, and John and Jennifer Hanser, landowners, for a conditional use permit renewal for an existing 194-foot tall monopole communication tower on a 100-foot by 100-foot leased partial, located at 19670 West 215th Street, zoned RUR Rural District.
Mr. Leipzig.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, Planning Department, again. This item at 215th Street is the very southern edge of the, of the county. It was presented for the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board on September the 5th, 2018. That body recommended approval of this, this item unanimously. Staff is also recommending approval. Might add, this is the third time this has been in front of you. It's for a 10-year renewal of the conditional use permit. It was originally presented to you in May of 2002 for a five-year renewal, then it was brought back in September of 2008 for a 10-year renewal, and now it's back before you again. I believe, last week, Commissioner Brown asked, what happens if the, if the tower is not used, it becomes obsolete? As stated in the stipulation, there's a, if there's no activity within six months, or if the tower is, is, there's not being used for six months, after that period, it has to be removed within 90 days.
Thank you. Other questions? Again, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Any comments you'd like to make? So noted, no comments from the applicant. Anyone else? Maybe there's somebody from Miami County. Yeah. Evidently not. All right, the item is back before the commission, a motion would be in order again. Mr. Klicka.
I move to adopt resolution number zero eight three dash eighteen, approving a conditional use permit renewal for a communication tower located at nineteen six seventy West two hundred and fifteenth street for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion is made in second to approve the resolution in regards to the conditional use permit. There's no further comment, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number fourteen. Request for proposal, R F P number two zero one eight dash zero six two. Consider authorizing a contract with L S C Communications for printing and mailing services for publications created and distributed by the Johnson County Public Information Office, Johnson County Park and Recreation District, and Johnson County Library at a cost not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars for a period of one year with the option to renew for four additional one-year periods.
Mr. Fransen.
Good morning, Chairman Ilert and Commissioners, I'm Tom Fransen with Treasury and Financial Management. Staff is before you today to take final action on R F P number two zero one eight dash zero six two, which is for our printing and mailing services for publications from the Johnson County Public Information Office, Johnson County Parks and Recreation District, and the Johnson County Library. This is a follow-on to the action taken by the board last week, and as noted in the briefing sheet, we did receive six responses to the R F P. L S C Communications is a proposed vendor for award and has demonstrated, among other components, that it has the capability to successfully deliver high-quality products with accurate color due to its equipment certifications and color management expertise. In addition, L S C Communications has performed publication and mailing services for Johnson County previously in a satisfactory manner. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, Mr. Fransen. Okay. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order. Do I hear a motion?
Okay, thank you. I would move for approval of R F P two zero one eight dash zero six two, authorizing a contract with L S C Communications for printing and mailing services for publications created and distributed by Johnson County Public Information Office, Johnson County Park and Recreation District, and Johnson County Library at a cost not to exceed three hundred thousand for a period of one year with the option to renew for four additional one-year periods.
Second. Motion has been made in second to approve the contract with L S C Communications. As noted, any further questions or discussion?
Chairman.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. Tom, you and I met this morning before, and I didn't have much of a chance. Joe had brought in the paperwork for Schedule A, and then you and I had reviewed it briefly. Question, though, is, was, were these conditions that were provided to me this morning, were these provided to the, were these the exact same conditions that were afforded the previous contractor on the printing? Or is this a new schedule of conditions?
This is a new schedule of conditions, although I would say the expectations were exactly the same.
For, okay, and how much more a year is this contract than the previous contract?
Based on the information I have, the expiring contract was about seventeen thousand dollars less than the proposal that's before you today.
So we're paying seventeen thousand more, and we've got this set of conditions, but do you know, did we go back to the previous contractor with this, with this list of, schedule of conditions and ask them to address and meet this?
I don't recall if there was that conversation. I know there was expectations that were clearly communicated to the previous vendor, and those expectations were not met, and therefore we decided to go back to the marketplace and ask for additional responses.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is that, and that's great that we have the Schedule A now and that we've got these conditions, but I'm struggling with that we're paying more, and now we have a schedule of conditions, but we didn't have a schedule of conditions at a cheaper price with a previous vendor. We could theoretically be saving seventeen thousand dollars a year and have these conditions in it and be getting the product for seventeen thousand a year less. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure. It's a question of cost at this point. I believe it was a question of delivering on the former contract that that vendor did not, up to staff's expectations, deliver, so that's why we went back to the marketplace. Obviously, the marketplace and the previous vendor was also able to respond and did respond to that R F P and provided the quote as well, and they were not chosen as the proposed vendor.
And how much weight was given to the cost in selecting the next vendor, the new vendors? In a weighted process, how much was given to the cost?
I believe that was twenty percent.
Okay. I will make this statement. I struggle that the cost of something that we buy with public money, the cost of it is given a twenty percent weighted value. I struggle with that. I expect things to be right. I expect to get what we pay for, but I do struggle with twenty percent weighted value being given to what we're spending public money on, and I feel like if we had gone back to the previous contractor with this set of conditions, we could be getting the same product for seventeen thousand dollars less, and we would have this as our guarantee that we were going to have that delivered to us. So, given that, my vote will reflect my comments there. I will be a no vote. Thank you.
Well, I would simply make these comments based upon the performance, and I'm not going to go into details in regards to the previous service provider. If, if those had been my personal funds, I would not want to have renewed that contract, and I apply that same standard to public funds. And even though it is a higher amount by sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars, I think based upon the prior performance, being able to count on various aspects of the contract being carried out, I am going to vote in favor of this. Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to visit with Ms. Hanson and someone else from her staff, and had asked the question, what were the compelling reasons to review this contract and consider other vendors? And I think Mr. Waters was on the phone, and I can't remember who else was there, but I had asked for a summary of those, and there were a couple that were quite compelling, and I was just wondering if Mr. Waters could recount those for us, because I think it's, it goes to your point of the cost of this contract and why it's important, not just for the quality of the product, but also, as I recall, we sell advertising in that publication, and if we do not meet the standards that we promised, then our customers can and evidently have had concerns with continuing service with us. Am I capturing that correctly, Mr. Waters? And if not, would you elaborate?
Yes, sir, I think you are capturing that correctly. Timeliness of delivery, delivery on schedule can be very important to us, depending on the, on the different publications, and we, we had several areas there of failure and delays on delivery. And we had communications, ongoing communications of schedule matters or whatever else it might be that were, that also caused problems in the smooth production, not just on their side, but on our side, of this whole process. It's really a partnership that we're entering into.
So we have to manage scheduling with the printer to satisfy those customers that we are selling advertising to, and that has been a challenge of some sort, and how do you monitor that, and what are the repercussions of that?
The, yes, to the, it is, it has been a problem in the past on some of those occasions with our advertisers, on whether it's quality or timeliness. Quality was the specific issue that, that we discussed. They, those advertisers pay us for the space, of course, so then we, we have to credit them or not charge them for those, those ads if they are, are that unsatisfactory. We worked that out with the vendor when there were problems, but of course, you don't want to have the problem in the first place.
Well, I think what I struggle with a little bit to that point is, so do you believe then a hundred dollar a day penalty or credit payable to the county is sufficient motivation for the vendor to meet those performance expectations?
I think that the penalty is important for several reasons. If, the intent of the penalty, when we're doing a lot of business with the vendor, is to correct the behavior, correct the performance. If you're late, that hundred dollars, that two hundred dollars, there you go, pay it, but this is documentation that you're, that you've missed some dates, and we need the dates here. This is about really managing the performance of the vendor rather than trying to find a, a financial penalty that could modify behavior through finances. It's really about continued relationship, correct your behavior so we can continue to business with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Klicka, did you have a question?
So, Joe, you're basically saying that due process was given to the vendor to try to correct the errors through the, through the term of the contract, and they were given ample opportunity to get it fixed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Mr. Allen.
Just had one quick question on the seventeen thousand dollar increase with the growth in the county and the number that would be mailed out. Would that be part of the increase in the, the cost?
I can't speak to the R F P response specifically. I don't know if Jody has more knowledge or if Joe does.
To, to be more precise, the, the vendor who has provided the service to us in prior year, they responded to this R F P as well. They were the lowest respondent, as Commissioner Brown pointed out. This is the second lowest responder, and they are, I think it is seventeen thousand, might be sixteen thousand dollars higher. So both of, that, that is an apples-to-apples comparison. That is using the same projected business for next year, to do the math for each vendor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? No one to be heard, it's back before the commission, and a motion would be in order.
I think we have a motion already.
Yep, do we have a motion? It's done. Clerk. Linda, do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
We do have a motion already to approve?
Yes, to approve.
All right. Motion is before us. No further discussion. Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
No.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items to be considered?
No, sir.
Turning to reports and communications, Ms. Postock Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. You have two items before you, and I'm going to ask Josh to come forward and talk about the first one. As he's coming forward, the second one's pretty quick, so I'm going to cover that first. The city of Overland Park on November fifth will hold a public hearing at seven thirty concerning amending a redevelopment district generally known, generally located at ninety-fifth and Metcalf. It's on the east side, and it's to expand it, and it is for a TIF for twenty years. That map is attached, and if you look at C one and C two, you'll see the difference where they added to the district. With that, unless there's any questions, I'll go ahead and turn it over to, to Josh to talk about evening service expansion.
Thank you, Penny. Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Josh Powers, County Manager's Office. On October twenty-ninth, transit will complete the implementation of evening service on the Metcalf and Seventy-Fifth Street routes. You may recall that back in April of this year, we were before you with this idea of a phased implementation of evening routes on these two routes. That item did pass unanimously, and in July, we added routes on both Metcalf and Seventy-Fifth at six forty-five P M and eight forty-four P M. On October twenty-ninth, we will add additional routes, again, on both routes, additional trips, at seven forty-five and nine forty-five. So now we've extended those routes out to about ten fifteen and eleven eighteen approximately on Metcalf and Seventy-Fifth Street respectively. So that's a completion of what we told you we would do. Since we initially added those two trips in July, service is up, or ridership is up on both routes by two-point-four and two-point-nine percent, so we are seeing some initial good returns. We've seen a number of comments on social media from grateful riders who now say that it makes getting to work, especially those service industry jobs in the evening, an option for them. So we're glad to hear that, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Mr. Klicka.
Josh, would you do me a favor? And could you get me about a twenty-four-month breakout of the different routes on, on the complete services, and from month to month, how they, I want to see all of them, to see how they're progressing, and the ridership is increasing, to include K-ten and as well as the Metcalf and all of them. But if you can make that available, not only to me, but the rest of the commissioners. I know we've done these, the new services out in the Gardner Edgerton area and, and Metcalf and so forth. I'd like to see how the progress has been going month by month.
Yes, sir.
See how the trends are looking.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little bit of a follow-on to what Commissioner Klicka asked. Bus service has been an issue that we have struggled with. We've made several changes over the last year to try to be more efficient as well as effective, and there was an effort to increase evening service. And while Mr. Klicka, I think, is on point asking about ridership numbers, the, the question I would like to go to is the, the return on investment, because, and I'm assuming here that you're using the big-box buses, but if you're using some other strategy to transport people, I would be interested in knowing kind of what the return on investment is, and if this is really the best strategy going forward, because there is interest in expanding that service, but there is a cost associated with that, and, and that's what I'm, I'm still struggling with. Right now, workers are able to get to work or not get to work based upon existing transit mechanisms. And when this was first proposed, one of the things I heard is that some, some industries, I'm going to say hotels, for example, actually had their own private bus services to transport their employees back and forth, and economically, that made sense for them. My concern is, are we just transferring that to the public coffers to pay that, thus giving the private sector, the, the businesses, well, another profit margin? And maybe that sounds cynical, but I, I want some sense of, are we paying for this in the most cost-effective way possible? And there's a balance there, because we want to make sure that employees can get to work, and we're, we're friendly to, to business, but there, what's the impact on the taxpayers versus those that are profiting from that? Are you tracking with my line?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a great question, and it's something we pay attention to very closely. Kind of taking that series of questions in reverse order, when you speak of hotels that have their own service, you know, that's a situation where you have a destination, they know where they're recruiting from, and they're running that vehicle, usually a van, from a couple of places right to a hotel. In our circumstance, you know, we're covering a wide geographic area that covers any number of businesses, so it makes it more difficult, if, if not unfeasible, to point to one specific business to say, can you participate in this? Now, where we have run transit service to consolidated employment centers, we are making efforts that range from help from private businesses in marketing and purchasing passes and fares, to some good news that we hope to bring forward to the B O C C here in the coming weeks and months about actual participation with private business. So you're exactly right to identify that it's an important issue. We do do that where it's possible. Now, as far as tracking return on benefit, obviously, you're familiar with all the metrics that we track on a monthly basis and report out to the B O C C and the J C T C. What we're trying to do here is increase ridership, increase fare box, and reduce cost per trip. And so the simplistic way to answer that is, the better job we do marketing it, the better job we run efficient, timely service, the more people ride it, and the benefit really is difficult to track, but when you consider about the economic ability to participate in the economy. If you can't get to your job in a steady, consistent way, then that person loses their job and might have to impact other, or access other county services. So it really is a trickle-down, and we want to get those people who are transit insecure, or transportation insecure, maybe don't own a car or have one car per household, want to make sure those people continue to get to jobs. And that's the big point about evening service. You know, a lot of those service industry jobs, when our transit service ends at six P M, as it does on other routes, they're not able to utilize that transit to get to it because it won't be running when they leave. So this is an effort, again, to get those later-ending jobs the ability to utilize public transportation.
One follow-on, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And, Mr. Powers, your, your point is well-taken, but the, the concern is the cost of running a service that has way more capacity than can ever be substantiated, ever be justified, versus other alternatives, and to make sure those other alternatives are exhausted. And I know we are considering participation with certain companies in southwest part of the county, and, and I commend you- the county and I commend you for that and I'm supportive of that, but I just want to, I'd like to see the metrics, the numbers that show that we have exhausted more reasonable, cost-effective mechanisms before adding more big-box buses and hearing the complaints of buses driving up and down the streets that look empty.
Yes, sir, and I erred in not mentioning that we are running, we have gone through an effort in our purchasing, in our CIP, to right-size the fleet. We are running the smallest of the big-box buses that we have in our fleet on these routes. So your point is well-taken.
Mr. Allen.
Just real quickly, a follow-up to Commissioner Ashcraft's observations on business participating. Actually, the Kansas City Transit Authority is working with a large employer in Johnson County that actually has a private bus that goes into Kansas City, Missouri to bring employees to their job site. They're having problems running that and they're looking for the, us to possibly take that over, but they would be paying for that service.
Mr. Chairman. Just personal experience in that regard, when the Sprint campus was originally initiated, Sprint ran two or three buses from across the metro area free of charge to their employees to come to the Sprint campus. And the employees did not use that service. And so the service was terminated. Mr. Osterhaus.
Josh, can we talk about, Robbie was here a few months ago and we talked about the Uber and Lyft partnerships. Can we, is there an update on that that we could hear about? Because I think that might answer some of Commissioner Ashcraft's concerns about right sizing the fleet and, you know, one or two riders being Uber and Lyft versus a bus.
That's absolutely right, Commissioner, that, I'm glad you mentioned that. So we do have a pilot that we're looking at with microtransit focused on a specific geographic area. We're in the end stages of finalizing what that might look like and what it would cost and obviously that will come before the board at the appropriate time. We're similarly in discussion with Uber about some specific roles that they could play in our transportation service with the end goal being exactly what you're saying. Where we can, we'd like to move public transportation into these smaller, on-demand, microtransit-type of delivery systems and away from fixed route. The long and short of it is that we need basically all of the options in our palette, if you will. Fixed route probably never, ever goes away because the cost of doing those on-demand microtransit services is not feasible for the entire region, but it definitely has a role to play so that we can deliver the most cost-efficient service across Johnson County.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Clicker.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Josh, as you well know, probably myself, Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Schaefer are probably the strongest advocates for the, for public transportation in this county and we have been for many, many years. What concerns me is when you talk about the increases in ridership, 2%, we're not talking about hundreds of people. We're talking about single or double-digit number of people on a daily basis. And the concern I deal with, Commissioner Brown and I sat yesterday in a meeting dealing with gravelled roads, subject of gravelled roads, and there are a few advocates on that advisory committee that feels like we should surface every single road that, at least chip-seal every single road in this county. And the argument, Commissioner and I basically said, how can we do that when there's only one, two, or three folks along that road and make such an investment not only from the capital side, but also from an operating side on an annual basis? An argument keeps coming forward on the transit side. The number of people using it or not using it. And therefore, in response to, in comment to what Commissioner Osterhaus was saying, I've asked for this whole concept of microtransit, tying into what some of the commissioners are saying here, is getting the right service in the right place. And we keep talking about it and talking about it and it's been talked about for three or four years or longer, as I've been into transit in the deal, and I'm not seeing anything yet. And the frustration is getting greater and greater. So with that in mind, my suggestion to you and as you deal with the rest of the staffs involved, it's not that we're anti-transit, but we need to start seeing something come for it in order for us to continue to support that investment. And I don't, I really don't want this to be an issue coming up in the next budget cycle or the next two budget cycles. I'd like to see the progress on a little more accelerated basis that would help ease that concern.
Your comments are spot-on, Commissioner, and we understand the desire to see some movement here. We've got a number of things we've been bringing forward in recent months. I would just like to share with you that I recently returned from the American Public Transportation Association Annual Meeting in Nashville. And on this issue, in areas jurisdictions like ours, suburban, exurban, lower-density places, we are as far down this path as anyone in the country. We understand that you, that the entire county wants to see some solutions brought forward immediately, but we are working and we understand the desire.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Any other items?
Nothing else to report.
Pardon?
Nothing else to report.
Okay. That concludes reports and communications. We'll turn to commission comments. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I had already made my notes, but it was already mentioned by Mr. Raby earlier, but Kay O'Connor's passing as a former state senator and from Olathe. I knew her well and had a monthly luncheon with her. And a very brief story about Kay O'Connor. I offered, I would drive to Topeka and meet her and take her to lunch and it was, every time I walked in and picked her up, where would you like to go? We went to Long John Silver's. That was where she wanted to go. So she was a very sweet lady. She was also as tough as nails and she could be both same time. We'll miss her. A note, I continue to work on the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant, the former site. Conversations continue. Had the gravel, gravel road task force meeting. I don't know, that kind of sounds like a country song. I don't know, there's something about the gravel road thing. Anyway, much conversation there as Commissioner Clicker mentioned a few minutes ago, a conversation took place about paving all of the, all of the gravel roads in all of Johnson County. I don't see that happening in my lifetime, but there was a conversation about it. And then, as I just follow, excuse me, a follow-up comment to the last item that was on our action agenda, I look forward to LSC, our new printing company's perfection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osterhaus.
Real quick, we had International Walk to School Day yesterday. The chairman and I were able to go out to Trail Ridge Elementary and meet and greet the kids as they came and walked to work. It was an interesting note to me that they had surveyed the seniors, or excuse me, the high school students at the Shion Mission School District and that was one of their top five things that they wanted more options, more bike racks for bikes and stuff like that, non-automobile options to go to school. So thanks to the Trail Ridge PTA for putting that together and the invite and also for setting up. They have a monthly walk to school day, but they were just taking part in this international one. So thank you for everyone who braved the cold and slight misting that came out and made that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Allen.
Had a real productive Commission on Aging meeting yesterday. There were legislative candidates and current legislators attending the meeting. And one thing that came out is in the state legislature, there's not one single thing that addresses senior issues only. It's currently with seniors and children's services and one of our local legislators thought maybe that we may want to consider in our legislative agenda to request some type of, I want to make sure I get the term right, joint committee, House/Senate committee to look at senior issues. And a lot of it is the 86 counties losing population, but the local Commission on Aging has been working on legislation with the problems with DCF. There's a lot of grandparents that would like to step forward to help their own grandchildren where their children may be facing issues and it's frankly a cost issue. They may be retired, living in a one-bedroom apartment and the cost savings is significant. You can spend maybe $1,000 a month to take care of two children versus $9,000 a month when they're out in foster homes and the problems that they have with foster homes. So they're working on that legislation, but I guess the point I'm trying to make is we may want to consider some type of legislative platform to look at senior issues in the state. And I'm more broad-based, I think, just personally, that one of the big issues is the senior population in rural counties. But frankly, it was a very productive meeting and was kind of surprised on a couple of comments, so worked very well.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask Mr. Allen, was there any additional discussion about the grandparent guardianship legislation?
That's exactly what that is.
Okay. Very good. Because that was, that was proposed this past session, but didn't get too far.
Didn't get out of committee.
Okay. So, and that makes all the sense in the world. So I think that would be a wonderful addition to our legislative platform. And, Mr. Chairman, just to add on to what Mr. Brown said, I had the opportunity to talk to Kay O'Connor's husband yesterday and he had indicated preliminarily that there will be visitation on Wednesday and the service on Thursday. Details will need to be worked out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clicker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not being here last week, I did not have the opportunity to make some comments about the Stillwell Community Park opening, but did attend that a week ago, last Saturday, week before. I was extremely surprised by the attendance, the number of folks that were there. By the end of the event and the hot dog event and so forth, the park staff counted probably around 500 people that had showed up to the event. But what was incredible about it is the number of kids that were there. And as we were giving up, having our talks with the community in the park opening, the backdrop was the kids on the playground. And watching this from kids with challenges and kids of all types just interacting with each other, it was a sight to behold. And for a small park that's in the far southeast part of the, of this county, in the farthest southeastern part of this county, to hear from the park staff talking about the number, the thousands of people that have already used that park and are continuing to use it, it's just, it's incredible. But with that being said, and Commissioner Schaefer, I appreciate you being there. I think you saw the same thing I did and would probably echo my sentiments on it. But with that being said, there were a lot of community folks that were involved in the development of this park, but I really have to give a lot of kudos to the park staff. Those folks did, what they're doing this past two years has just been incredible in the amount of parks that have been opening up. And, Mr. Chairman, you and I had conversations about two or three years ago, talking about the priority of getting these parklands opened up to the public. And I think as we can all attest to, from the horseshoe here, from the dyes here, is that park staff has not let us down in that effort. And please, very much appreciative of that. My second comment I did want to make is, I remember a couple of years ago when we were discussing budget times, some tough budget issues, that there was talk about trying to merge all the publications of the park, of the county together, the Best of Times, along with the JOCO and some of the other things. And I remember kind of taking issue about merging the Best of Times in with any of the other publications. And I guess this has been said as, however you want to call it, but I really saw the value in the Best of Times and how it really affects many of our community. And with that being said, found out this morning that our circulation of Best of Times is in excess of 70,000 citizens here of Johnson County that benefit. And just in the last year, there was a 12% increase in that circulation, which goes to show that, you know, we, our population is changing here. This DACA, this publication, which crosses all aspects for our senior citizens, has been a real valuable tool to our community. And with that, I want to put out the kudos to Gerald and Sherelle who have been breaking their backs over the years to make that publication as, as strong as it is in our community. And I think we were advised yesterday that the two of them received some real notable awards by National Association of Mature Publication Publishers, that I think we got, I read where we got nine awards and both Gerald and Sherelle can definitely take personal credit for that. And what's really, but you put it all aside, what's really fascinating about it is that those two, along with the rest of the communication staff, how they work together to put the best products out for our citizens to keep them as informed as possible is just incredible and seeing them work together. And I sometimes don't think, we recognize Gerald quite a bit for his editorial work and the time and effort, but we need to also recognize Sherelle. That lady has kept us, kept that publication almost in, outside of staff time being put into it. It runs, the ads that are sold basically pay for the publication itself. I think outside of that, maybe the mailing costs or whatever are completely covered by the ads that Sherelle is out there hustling for to make that as effective as possible. So with that being said, congratulations to the PIO staff, especially Gerald and Sherelle. You guys are all doing fabulous. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schaefer.
Nice to have you down. Thank you. And well, as well to the, to the staff. We received this information yesterday. We're very proud of the efforts that were put forward and I know our citizens appreciate it. Past activities this week included, last Saturday evening, the chair and Jan and Janine and I attended the very informal annual fundraiser gala for Growing Futures. Quite an event, if you have a chance to get, if you have a, get a chance to go to that in the future. It's a great event for Growing Future and the kids in our community who need a little help. Tuesday afternoon, had a chance to attend the Leewood Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Always, always well-attended and very, very good program was presented. Wednesday afternoon was the big event of the week. This is, was the 18th Annual Third Grade Chili Cookoff at Briarwood Elementary School. And I've had the pleasure, I believe, to attend and be a chili cookoff judge at every one of those events and they made note of that yesterday when I was there.
For how many years?
18 years.
18 years.
18 years. And the three third-grade teachers have a chili cookoff and they prepare with the kids and the moms and the dads of the classes and we judge it. Three chiefs were there. Ted McKnight was one of, one of the members, Ed Lothimer, and I can't remember the third chief's name. I'm sorry about that. I'll find out and let you know. But anyway, it was quite an event yesterday afternoon. I'm looking forward again next year. And then this morning, the chair and Jim and myself had a chance and several staff members had a chance to attend the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Annual Breakfast. A very good event. Thank you.
Couple of items. I want to follow up on Commissioner Osterhaus's comment about the National Walk Bike. Our Department of Health and Environment was also active in sponsoring that and they have worked with 15 different grade schools in Johnson County to promote that activity. So, Lou Jean, thanks to you and your group's efforts. I had an opportunity to be on an interesting panel this week. The AARP, I think it was called some type of Midwest convention they had in Kansas City. And I invited me to participate on a panel and I had an opportunity to visit with representatives from other Midwestern states. The topic was livability. Had an opportunity to talk about the Best Times, also services offered by a Human Services Department, Parks and Recreation, Library, and Public Transit, opportunities for seniors. And at the conclusion of that, several people came up to me and said, gosh, you're really far ahead of the rest of us in those areas. So thanks to all of those staff members, department directors who were involved in providing those services. And I also mentioned the Area Agency on Aging and the fine work that they do. So enjoyed that. This evening, the, several of us will be attending the city of Olathe's 15th Annual Community Awards. That, excuse me, gathering will be held at the Olathe Community Center and Ms. Postock That, excuse me, gathering will be held at the Olathe Community Center, and Ms. Postoke-Ferguson, our county manager, will be the keynote speaker. So we'll look forward to your comments, Penny. The Audit Committee meets this afternoon at 1:00 PM in Room 202204, if anybody's interested in attending that meeting. And then this coming week, beginning on the 15th, 16th, and 17th, will be the Kansas Association of Counties Annual Convention here in Johnson County at the Overland Park Convention Center. And many of us on the dais will be attending some meetings, as well as staff members. So it'll be a busy two or three days first to next week. We do not have a request for an executive session, so we are adjourned from our regular business session. We'll take a short break and come back for agenda review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for the purpose of agenda review for next week's meeting. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Kluck.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown is absent, and Chairman Ilert.
Here. We do have a quorum present. Would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda?
Item number one, consider approving the September 27, 2018 business session minutes. Item number two, consider authorizing a contract change order with VF Anderson Builders for additional construction work required under the Indian Creek II Contract 21 and Scepter Capacity Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $137,572.68, increasing the total contract to $4,925,197.51.
Ms., excuse me. Ms. McCarrick. There were just two items on the consent agenda. Right, okay.
Yes, Chairman.
Would you like to speak to item number two?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Let me, we have a map, do you have the map up for that item? Get, pull that, we'll pull up a map for this item. So, this is a change order that's part of a project that's wrapping up, we're just about completed. Wastewater did a project, which essentially extended north or upstream of the Meadowbrook property, and then downstream, down to almost Indian Creek. And part of that, as part of that project, we were providing for the capacity of the Meadowbrook Park, if you recall. That had never been part of the district before, so the developer was, was, it was a joint project, or I should say, they participated in some of the costs of the project. We've got the map up for you here, and so Meadowbrook Properties here in the center of the map, and these red lines represent the sewers that we performed improvements to enhance the capacity for peak flows, as well as then downstream, we enhanced capacity for peak flows and to provide for development that's going on at Meadowbrook here. During design, you know, we're always getting the information from utilities, and we had gotten information from the power utility regarding what they had underground in this area here, which is between, generally between 97th Street and down to 101st Street. Once we got there and dug it up, conditions were different, and so this change order is to cover that. The structure that the power utility had underground turned out to be larger, and so we needed to move the main in order to accommodate the location of that structure. And so this change order is to pay for the costs of those changes to the realignment there.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. McCarrick, so does KC P&amp;L have any liability for the information that we made decisions on versus the information that was actually found once we?
Yeah. Good question. As I asked that same question.
Okay.
But you know, in the older areas, all utilities, not just the power utility, you know, even us, sometimes you either have older documentation, or you may not have all the documentation. And so in this case, they gave us the, the information that they had. It turned out that instead of the, just a conduit, the power utility ended up being in large vaults. And so, you know, realigning to get around those vaults, if we had known that before, you know, during design, we would have been paying these costs, and it would have been included in the bid, so.
Okay. Other questions?
Any reason not to leave it on consent? All right, so noted, next item.
Thank you. Item number three, resolution number 086-18, consider City of Gardner application numbers FDP-18-06, final development plan for the new sales office building and recreation area additions at the Conestoga Manufacturing Home Park, 1199 East Santa Fe, Gardner, Kansas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Jay Leipzig, the Planning Department. This item is for a new retail sales and recreation area for the Conestoga Mobile Home Park, or Manufactured Home Park. It is within one mile of the Johnson County New Century Airport. It was approved by the City of Gardner on August 28, 2018, went for the Airport Commission on September 24, 2018, and it was unanimously approved as well, and staff is recommending approval. And I do have a, an elevation of what the new sales office will look like, along with the site plan. You know, we are adjacent to the existing facility.
Okay, questions?
Well, this is a planning item, so it will remain in action. Next item.
Item number four, consider authorizing the amendment to the county's wellness strategy for 2019. Two, one, expand the current voluntary outcomes-based wellness program for employees to include spouses, and two, include an activity-based option while maintaining the tobacco cessation incentive and the budget neutral incentive structure.
Mr. Aaron.
Cameron Aaron, Benefits and Wellness Manager. In 2016, the Board had approved a three-year wellness strategy that spanned the years 2017 to 2019. We've found that the outcomes-based wellness program has been pretty successful in improving overall health of the employees and helping to keep down our claim costs. However, we are recommending that we provide employees with a second option to enable to earn the wellness incentive. We propose that second option be an activity-based program, where employees will earn, will have to complete at least eight activities in order to earn the wellness incentive, so it'll give employees greater opportunity to earn the incentive, so it should increase our already very favorable participation rate. By including the participatory or activity-based program, it does enable us to start formally including spouses. We have encouraged spouses to participate in the past, but they have not had a separate incentive. By including these activity-based, the activity-based program, the legal has advised us that it is going to be more compliant with the GINA, the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act of 2008, and to encourage the spouses to participate, since they still continue to cost our health care plan more than employees, we would like to offer them a $40 per month incentive, which would be used by the employee to offset the cost of their medical coverage. I did provide also a summary plan description that contains more details regarding that program, along with the briefing sheet, so, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Couple of questions, the $40 is available only if the spouse participates successfully?
Correct. In either of the two programs, either the outcomes-based or the activity-based. They have the option of participating in either one, since it's a voluntary program.
And the activities that one must be engaged in, can you?
Oh, you want me to elaborate? I'm sorry. They would be including.
No, I just, whether I can, you know.
Okay, well, yeah. Of course you can.
Get out of the chair more frequently, or whether I have to do a mile or so a day.
Well, it includes such activities as group challenges. All of these activity-based programs are offered through the Bravo Wellness, our wellness administrator. That will make it much easier and faster, more convenient for that data to be uploaded and recorded, so that we have better record-keeping for when the incentive is earned. So it includes, you must complete at least one group challenge, at least two personal challenges, at least two online health university classes or courses. They're all, of course, health-related, regarding either weight management or fitness, walking 675,000 steps, which may sound like a lot, but actually it's not as bad as it sounds, within a three-month period that we'll be offering, and then there are a lot of different opportunities within those categories.
So how many, how many of those, how many of those have to be completed?
Eight.
You said two?
Eight. Part eight options.
There are eight options, but how many do?
No, those, you have to complete eight of those activities, I apologize, eight of those activities to earn the wellness incentive.
That's a pretty good challenge.
It is. That's why we're encouraging people to stay with the outcomes-based.
I see. All right, any other questions?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Osterhaus?
I was gonna say, that's every three months, you have to do these eight?
No, no, once you, we're, we're just gonna offer a defined period to do, the, the three month is for the walking only. People will still have the entire wellness campaign to complete the eight activities, which runs from actually, we say January 1 through August 31, but it happens to be that with January 1 on New Year's Day, Bravo requires a blackout day, so it's actually gonna be January 3. And since August 31 falls on a weekend, and then there's Labor Day, we're gonna move the end of the campaign to September 3.
Okay. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cameron, I'm very supportive of the concept. Is this something that Bravo or others have successfully implemented? It's been well-received? The reason I ask is, at some point, it, it starts to become rather complicated, and personally, I've had some trouble keeping my data current with Bravo and the service providers. Is this, is there a simple mechanism for recording or reporting this? And do you expect compliance or compliance, participation to be at a certain level, to be successful, or?
You know, I don't know if we've actually, we've never placed any targets. We've always historically had about 85% participation, which according to our employee benefits consultant and Blue Cross, when, when they used to be. Employee Benefits Consultant and Blue Cross, when, when they used to be involved in our wellness program, that is way above the standards of an employer our size. So anytime we're above 80, we're pleased, but we're, we're always happy to have more. Uh, with the activity-based program, being that they're all through Bravo, there should be no reason that they don't get op, uh, uploaded properly. Um, we're always, I can assure you, the benefit staff is always managing our wellness vendor on a regular basis to make sure that these bugs are worked out. Uh, they've even offered us a different platform, uh, that we have, uh, politely declined because we do not want to be a test subject. So we will be staying on our current platform during this process.
Thank you. Uh, I think I'm interested in sharing the outcome approach with my spouse.
All right, well, good. I hope everybody else feels the same way.
Thank you.
Consent.
Consent?
Consent's fine, yeah.
All right, so noted. Uh, next item.
The next two items, item number five and item number six, the Board will be setting as the governing board of the Fire District Number Two. Item number five, consider approving the September 27th, 2018 Special Business Session Minutes, sitting as the governing board of Fire District Number Two.
Mr. Thompson.
Actually, no comments to make on this item, Chairman.
Okay.
These can't go on consent, right?
No, no, we will have to take separate action, and we will have to sit, uh, as the Fire Board on these items.
Commissioner Schaefer was also absent at that meeting, so he would have to stay on action.
Okay, and just for the record, would you read item number, the last item?
Item number six, consider approving the October 2018 Payables for Fire District Number Two.
Okay, again, that will remain on action. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Allen.
I'm gonna be out of town for 12 days starting tomorrow, signatures?
I think we have an answer to that. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Maury Thompson, Deputy County Manager, uh, thank you for that reminder, Commissioner Allen. We have addressed that matter with a financial institution, and one signature on checks will be sufficient for them, so you are covered.
That's just one time, though.
Yeah, they'll get used to it.
Or maybe not. Okay, any other items?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes our agenda review. Uh, we do not have an afternoon session. Again, a reminder, there is a 1:00 PM Audit Committee meeting, room 202204. Thank you all very much.